Six thirty, we'll go ahead and call the order. Can you call roll?
Okay. Commissioner Langston?
Present.
Commissioner Natalie Smith. Commissioner Natalie Smith sent an email indicating she would not be here this evening. Commissioner Malachi?
Here.
Commissioner Poole?
Here.
Commissioner Pat Smith?
Here.
We've raised for vice chair. So, we're gonna be starting tonight with an oath of office. And then we will go on to the election of the planning chair and vice chair. After that, we will do our consent agenda. Then for our regular agenda, we have two, we have a monthly planning report and two discussion items. One is the discussion of the House Bill 2001, and the other is a discussion of our annual work plan for 2020. So, let's go ahead and start with the oath of office. Jackie?
Okay, first, Michael Milch.
I, Michael Milch. Do solemnly swear that I will support the Constitution of the United States.
Do solemnly swear that I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And of the State of Oregon.
And of the State of Oregon.
And the Charter and the Municipal Code of the City of Gladstone.
And the Charter and Municipal Code of the City of Gladstone.
And that I will, to the best of my ability.
And that I will, to the best of my ability.
Perform the duties of Planning Commissioner.
Perform the duties of Planning Commissioner.
For the City of Gladstone, Oregon.
For the City of Gladstone, Oregon.
During my entire term, so help me God.
During my entire term, so help me God.
Darren Williams?
I, Darren Williams.
I, Darren Williams.
Do solemnly swear that I will support the Constitution of the United States.
Do solemnly swear that I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And of the State of Oregon.
And of the State of Oregon.
And the Charter and Municipal Code of the City of Gladstone.
Charter and Municipal Code of the City of Gladstone.
And that I will, to the best of my ability.
And that I will, to the best of my ability.
Perform the duties of Planning Commissioner.
Perform the duties of Planning Commissioner.
For the City of Gladstone.
For the City of Gladstone.
During my entire term, so help me God.
Would you two both like to come up here and take a seat?
I think we'll have you guys just take a seat for now. And then we can switch up as we do the elections of our Planning Commission Chair and Vice Chair. And then we'll put you in your official seats.
How about if I sit in Natalie's seat for right now?
You can sit wherever you want.
Welcome aboard.
So, I think what we'll do is we'll go ahead and do the election of the Chair first, and then do the election for the Vice Chair after that. So, for the election of the Chair, do I have any volunteers or recommendations?
Does anyone like to make any suggestions, if not, or recommend, nominations, excuse me, if not, I do have one from Natalie Smith.
Why don't you go ahead, it'll be the same as I'm gonna say, so.
Natalie Smith would like to nominate Michael Milch as Chair.
I second that.
And I will go ahead and make a second nomination for Les Poole.
Thank you. I'll accept that.
Any other nominations or volunteer?
Unless someone else has. So, I'll go ahead and do a roll call first for Michael Milch, and then for Les Poole.
Okay.
Uh, so nomination of Chair for Michael Milch, Commissioner Langston?
Yes.
Commissioner Malachi?
No.
Commissioner Poole?
No.
Commissioner Pat Smith?
Yes.
Commissioner Williams?
Yes.
Commissioner Milch?
Yes.
Okay, I will do nomination for Les Poole as Chair, Commissioner Langston?
Uh, no.
Uh, Commissioner Malachi?
Yes.
Commissioner Poole?
Yes.
Commissioner Pat Smith?
No.
Commissioner Williams?
Yes.
And Commissioner Milch?
No.
So, I have... I have four yes votes for Commissioner Milch, and three yes votes for Commissioner Poole.
Okay.
So, I believe Commissioner Milch will be our Chair.
Okay, and then for the Vice Chair?
Vice Chair, do we have any nominations?
I nominate Les Poole.
I second that. I guess I need to accept that, sure.
Any other nominations? Commissioner Natalie Smith also nominated Les Poole as Vice Chair. Okay, I will go through roll call. Commissioner Langston?
Yes.
Commissioner Malachi?
Yes.
Commissioner Poole?
Yes.
Commissioner Pat Smith?
Yes.
Commissioner Williams?
Yes.
Commissioner, Commissioner Milch?
Yes.
So, our new Chair is Commissioner Milch, and Vice Chair is Commissioner Poole.
Okay.
Yeah, thank you.
Would you sit here?
Good job, Malachi, by the way. Perfect. Yeah. I wasn't sure, I just said.
You have the agenda?
Always correct, you've been saying, unless they tell you to move.
All right, the next item on the agenda is approval of the consent agenda, which consists only of the minutes of the meeting of November nineteenth. We did not have a meeting in December. Has everyone had an opportunity to review the minutes, and are there any changes or corrections to be made?
I do have one, and that is it, there was, there was an issue that was taken care of that's mentioned at the end regarding the parking agreement, the number of spaces. And that was real important, that was a can of worms coming down the road someday, which would've got right past us, so I would just make a motion that we clarify language of how we got to the applicant, modifying or needing to come back with an alteration of their parking plan.
Is there a specific paragraph where?
Yeah.
It was mentioned briefly, or we could, that we could add some words to?
Yeah. It's referenced in the end that they, you know, they will come back, and it's not a problem, they're approved. But those are the kind of things that we like to see in the minutes, just in case someone comes and asks. And I don't, I don't know how well it was covered there. We don't, I'm not asking for anything extensive.
They, they have come back and provided an updated parking agreement that included the five parking spaces on that parcel, with the three behind the residence, and the two in front of the residence.
Right.
It does, oh, sorry, sorry. I was just gonna say, under applicant testimonies, as they will update the parking agreement to make sure, I mean, so you just want that to?
Right, I just wanted that to be reflected there, and I was sure they would take care of it, so I appreciate your clarifying that they did, but I'm just making a motion that we amend the minutes to include that.
Do you have certain language you want included in there?
That, well, I guess it would be myself.
Would you want them to say?
Yeah, that, that, no, that I, I discovered an inequity in the parking plan and, and configuration, and clarified it, and they agreed to submit a new plan.
Would it help to?
That's, that's all I'm looking for, thank you.
Would it help to spell out the specific parking arrangement that she just mentioned in the minutes? Is that what we're looking for?
Is that what's specified in the second sentence of the, um, large paragraph under discussion? Ms. Fields said, "The parking sharing arrangement shall be updated to reflect what is being proposed, including three spaces behind the existing non-conforming residents, and two parking spaces on the street side." Was that the, is that the gist of what you wanted to have happen?
Yeah, yeah, and it's, it's, it's there, but it's a little vague, and at least I think it is. If someone, again, I'm not preoccupied with this, but these are the kind of things that later on, when we have parking issues or something comes up, it's nice to be able to go back and look at the record and have it real clear.
Do you want, should we address the reason for your concern about it originally? Did it not?
Yeah, just that they're, yeah, that's what I was saying, their original application was in error, and that's what I should've said first.
Okay.
That, clarify, thank you, Chair.
I'll make a motion that we accept the minutes as amended.
I'll second that, of course.
Well, I wasn't sure of the wording we got in the amendment. Uh, can we add to that sentence I read? Can we add, to bring it into conformity with minimum parking requirements?
Just to, just to, to, to correct, um, an error in the initial application.
Correct, yeah.
That's what we're doing, and that's why it's significant. Right, I wasn't concerned whether or not they could meet that, and I'm glad they have, and I knew they would. But it was one of those things that, down the road, if someone moved into that home, not to get too far in the weeds, and decided they wanted to park two cars out front, the parking agreement would say they could.
Yeah, okay.
And so, we've cleaned things up.
So, the application that would've been in the agenda for that meeting showed one set of things, and what was actually approved ended up being slightly different.
Changed, correct.
And we want the minutes to reflect what was finally approved.
Just how we got there.
Basically, the?
Yeah, and, and how we got there is in the minutes, but it's just one of those things I wanted to clarify, and I apologize if it seems like I'm being long-winded about it.
If I recall, the image and the words didn't match.
Oh, okay.
Right.
Right.
All right, so let's have?
Thank you.
Uh, would you be agreeable to adding the phrase then, at the end of that sentence, "to correct an error in the original application"?
Yes.
Okay.
Perfect.
All right.
Well edited.
So, that, that is the suggested amendment. We have a motion to approve the minutes as amended. All those in favor, say aye.
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 Any opposed? I think that's the only item on the consent agenda. Do we, uh, do we get a verbal report from our planner?
So, that's review?
Oh, that's the next item, okay. All right.
Let me do this first?
Oh, business from the public, yes, I will ask if there, any of the, okay, no. Seeing, uh, no public attendance other than our city staff and council liaison, we will move on to the regular agenda.
Yeah.
Uh, Mrs. Fields? Ms. Fields, what is the correct, correct, uh, title that you would prefer?
It, it does not matter.
Okay.
Either one, I am married.
You are married?
Um, but I am not one to, uh, hold to titles.
Okay.
So, we have a monthly report from December. Did we also include the November monthly report?
No.
In their packet? We did not, okay. Um, so, in, uh, November, there were seven customer contacts, forty-six customer phone and email contacts, nine building permits with land use review, one pre-application conference, and one administrative decision. In December, um, there were three customer service contacts at the public service counter. There were thirty customer emails and phone contacts. Um, there were five building permits with land use review. There were no pre-application conferences, and it has come to my attention that there was one administrative decision. And so, there is a typo in the report, there was a signed permit issued.
In December?
In December, correct. And there is a signed permit that will be modified as well and updated, so you will see that in January as well.
Uh, any questions regarding the building permits that are listed on the second page of the report? Uh, two of these appeared, the ones on West Jersey Street are, um, apparently new homes going in in the location where an older home had been torn down behind the senior center. Can you tell me what the one on 250 West Hereford Street is? It's listed as a new single-family residence, uh, is this also a replacement of an existing home?
It is my understanding that it is not a replacement.
Okay.
If I remember correctly, from the building permit that came in, it was, um, a vacant lot that was receiving a new home, to meet the, the needs of, uh, a neighbor who needed a slightly different housing arrangement.
Okay. Um, so maybe it's a large lot that already has a high, I, I looked it up on Zillow to see if there was a house there, and there was.
It does appear to be.
Yeah.
Yeah, but it, there, um...
Is it an ADU or something like that, or a full-size house?
Based on my recollection, and I might be combining them, Hereford. I'm looking for the, to see if I can bring it up on the GIS. That would be great.
We asked you a trick question, you know.
Yes, you did, you, you stumped me, um, so.
Well, and I know that, um, you know, it, it, some of the lots are extra-large size.
Right.
And it's possible to fit two, and the numbering system doesn't always, you know, you don't know what your number's gonna be until the house is built, I guess.
True, and the description that you find in that table came directly from the building permit. And so, if there was a demolition, a demolition permit that is not attached to it, it may not show up as a replacement.
Oh, okay.
It may show up as a new one, even if there's one existing there, um, but it... I'm not sure when or if, um, but there's clearly a house there, so.
Okay, well, perhaps we'll get more clarification as the process continues.
Yeah.
But thank you for keeping us informed of, you know, new developments and, uh, things. In a town where we often describe ourselves as built-out and complete, uh, it's good to see that every once in a while, something new does come in.
Yeah, the Jersey Street was an interesting case, 'cause they, they reestablished old historic lot lines, and created three lots from one lot. And so, it was, there's two, two structures in this, uh, monthly report, but there was a replacement dwelling earlier in 2019 at that same area.
Oh, so these are the, the last two of the total of?
That is my understanding, yeah.
Regarding the proposed zone change on Webster, um, what, any idea what that's about?
Um, a multi-family housing development would like to expand their parking and storage capabilities and include a playground.
Is that the one that's behind?
They are hoping to have a zone change in the property line adjustment with the church behind them.
Correct, yeah, okay.
Yeah.
Then, I think, that one's been in the pipe for a little while, right?
Yes. Yes. They had a pre-application meeting last year and are coming in again, to try to work out how they can meet their needs within the Gladstone Municipal Code.
This is not the single-room occupancy?
No.
Structure that's at a different part of Webster, okay. All right. Do any Commissioners have any other questions about the monthly report from our planner?
I, I do have a question, Webster Road came up, there's that, uh, one-time convalescent home, and then it was a teen rehabilitation center that's been vacant. Has something been filed on that?
No.
Nothing, just sitting there, empty. Okay, thanks.
Jackie?
Are you referring to the property on, that?
Directly across from the Webster Baptist Temple.
Yeah, the county's purchased that.
Thank you for your question, I do think it's important that you know that Clackamas County's in the process of purchasing, purchasing that. This is gonna be one of the first projects with the Metro Affordable Housing Bond that was approved, and so, they are doing public outreach right now, so I believe they're in the process of a land sale agreement for that.
Okay, great, thank you.
Mm-hmm.
Is that actually, is, is that in Gladstone? I think it's right, almost on top of the line, isn't it, or?
No, it's, it's in Gladstone.
No, it's up, I'm sorry, I was thinking down the road, right.
Yeah, it, it's.
It's well in Gladstone.
It's right across the street from the Baptist Church, uh, just before you make the curve up toward the, uh, the middle school.
Yep.
Uh, Ms. Betts? Do we, do you know, do we know anything about the, the type of project that's being proposed, other than it's affordable housing? Is it multi-family, is it single-family?
Single senior housing.
Single senior, okay, great.
And I'm thinking similar to kind of like dorm rooms with shared facilities.
Okay.
That's the extent of detail that I have at, at this point.
I would add that it flew by me, just, you know, I got a snippet, but initially, it was forty-five units, does that sound?
I don't have that.
Yeah, anyway, that was the original proposal, but I'm not involved in it, but.
But it's an existing facility, it's not an addition of forty-five new units, it's converting what had been a rehabilitation place or a senior retirement place to just a new use for, for permanent housing.
Correct, the previous use had fifty units in the building.
Yeah.
So, it had been reconstructed to have fifty units total, but they, they may only be proposing forty-five.
Right. And we have been contacted regarding this, but we do not have an application on file yet.
Okay.
Correct.
The other thing I've seen in city minutes or other references is that there will be some services provided as well. It's not just housing, like an apartment complex, but there are also some services to the residents that are proposed to be part of it.
That's correct.
And that may be why there's a reduction in the number of units from what it was before. They may be using some of that space for, for that.
There are more.
All right, do we generally take a motion to approve the report as amended?
Yes, please.
All right, I'll entertain such a motion.
I make a motion to approve the, uh, monthly running, uh, monthly planning report.
All right, is there a second?
I second it.
All right, it's been moved and seconded, all those in favor, say aye.
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 All right, the report is accepted. We move on to the next agenda item. Discussion of House Bill 2001 and Senate Bill 1051, and how it will impact future efforts in Gladstone. You have something in your packet that discusses this in, in general terms with some charts. And I will let, I will let staff introduce this, and then we will see how we want to proceed with the discussion. Can you all see the presentation? There's a, a chair down there.
We had a chance to change chairs, and you blew it.
Thank you.
Back in the fall, Planning Commission members received notice that House Bill 2001 had passed, and that there was, um, guidance from DLCD on what was coming. You all will be receiving more information in regards to Gladstone, and how Gladstone is impacted at the next meeting, where there will be a public hearing on proposed code amendments. Prior to that public hearing, I asked if it would be beneficial to give an overview of House Bill 2001, as well as Senate Bill 1051 and House Bill 2003, so that you all are aware of all of the housing-related legislation that you may hear about in the news, or from your neighbors, or in your role as Planning Commission during public hearings. And so, tonight, it is just an overview, it's not specifically about how these will be impacting Gladstone, but it is good for you all to know where they are, and what, that you may be seeing amendments or, um, proposals in relation to these in the near future. Turn it on. It's on. So, House Bill 2003 directs municipalities with more than ten thousand residents to complete a housing needs analysis and provide for strategies to implement the needs identified in the housing needs analysis. And we have until September first, 2020, to let DLCD know how we are going to be moving, moving forward with this. Senate Bill 1051 required that clear and objective criteria is an option for developers of housing developments, and that accessory dwelling units are permitted on all residentially zoned lots within the metro area. House Bill 2001 removed the parking and owner occupancy requirements from ADU regulations, and is requiring that all residentially zoned parcels allow at least a duplex on the parcel, and that quadplexes, triplexes, townhomes, and clusterhomes are provided for in certain areas. Now, what that specifically means, provided for in certain areas, we will receive more guidance from DLCD through the development of a model code that they have to complete by December of 2020. That's why it's happening, it's going to impact Gladstone, but you all do not have to do anything in relation to House Bill 2001 until after there's a model code to consider.
Can I ask a question about the, um, it's actually related to this letter we have here, but, and the point there. It says that there's an exception for ADUs that are used as vacation rentals. Does Airbnb count as a vacation rental? Okay.
Yeah. So, in regards to House Bill 2003, there was a regional housing needs analysis conducted, and Gladstone was a part of that. It was a partner with Clackamas County and other jurisdictions within Clackamas County on this 2019 housing needs analysis. That can serve as a baseline for the housing needs analysis that Gladstone develops and finalizes and adopts, um, to be in compliance with House Bill 2003. And so, there is already a lot of work, um, that identifies the buildable lands and the forecast for needed housing in the future within the city limits of Gladstone. However, that will need to be tweaked and finalized prior to adoption.
And we also, we engaged Seagull Planning Services to do some analysis of our code.
Correct.
As a result of having already done that study, so, uh, we're good that we're kind of a little bit ahead of the game on this. Uh, we're not under the same time crunch that some communities might be.
Correct, and in addition to the initial work on the code audit and the housing needs analysis, Gladstone received a grant to finalize the housing needs analysis and the, the, the code audit. And so, knowing that Gladstone applied for a grant from DLCD to finalize the housing needs analysis, the schedule that DLCD created for when housing needs analysis would be updated anticipates that Gladstone will have an updated housing needs analysis adopted prior to 2022. And once there's a housing needs analysis adopted by the City of Gladstone, then it resets the clock. then it resets the clock and every six years from that date, Gladstone will need to amend and update the housing needs analysis.
Do you happen to know, this is a United States federal census year. Do you happen to know whether the federal census information will be helpful to us, other than population figures? The housing analysis related to income, I think, in relation to housing costs, right? Is that where it mostly focuses, or if we discover, for example, that the population in Gladstone has declined to something less than we've been assuming from the county information, will that impact what we do?
It may. It may have bearing on future forecasts if it has lagged. It's always nice to have concrete numbers on the number of individuals within a community. And the projections that are used in the housing needs analysis come from the American Community Survey, which is an estimate. They do a survey and they make a projection across the entire jurisdiction based on those surveys. So having concrete numbers is always beneficial when you are looking at the current needs of housing and trying to anticipate what will be needed in the future.
I seem to recall the last numbers we got, they were all based on rentals specifically and they didn't apply to owned homes. And so the percentages only applied to rentals. Is that part of this?
I'm not sure what you're referring to.
We had some report we went over that was talking about the percentage of housing that was providing for different income levels or whatever. But it only applied rental properties, it didn't apply owned properties or something.
It was the percentage of people that have the burden, right, rent burden.
Right. So the percentage that it applied to Gladstone was based on the percentage of the rental properties we had, rather than the population as a whole? I'm wondering if that at all plays into this?
The overall housing needs analysis looked at both owner occupied as well as rental. And so if the renters were identified as severely cost burden, then that could play into the final housing strategy for rentals. But the analysis has to also include homeowners. Because homeowners also can be cost burdened if they spend more than thirty percent of their income on housing.
Do they have any idea how many ADUs, is there anything expected on what it will increase the population here? Anything looking at?
How it impacts?
Not that, I don't know that they specifically looked at ADU development versus duplexes versus... I know that when they were finalizing the housing needs analysis, the clarity of House Bill 2001 was not yet here. And so there was no interpretation from DLCD on what the housing, House Bill 2001 would mean for jurisdictions. And so there's a time gap. And so ADUs was, is and was already part of the Gladstone municipal code, allowing ADUs. However, whether their procedure specifically looked at ADUs, I'm not sure.
Could I add that we've got a lot of five thousand square foot lots? That makes that a lot more challenging than on a seven or what have you. So you also have to look at the old part of town and people are combining lots and all of that. And so trying to get an ADU in there and still be able to park a car is starting to get tight. But we'll see what happens.
Have to almost make it a duplex and tie it to the house, so it's a duplex then and not an ADU.
Right.
It can be done.
And ADUs, does it refer generally to exclusively, what's the term? Separate units or the conversion of a basement to a livable unit within an existing home or garage or something could be an ADU?
Correct.
If our standards are adjusted to allow them?
Currently, currently Gladstone Municipal Code allows accessory dwelling units, both inside a primary dwelling as well as detached from a primary dwelling. However, the size limit is four hundred square feet, one bedroom. And so...
Do we have some limits on where it can be placed, right? Like as far as the boundaries?
I think there's some setbacks.
There are setbacks, yes. There are setbacks.
Differs.
So part of the code audit will address Senate Bill 1051, which requires that there must be a clear and objective option for developers who are developing housing. Thinking about the Gladstone Municipal Code in relation to Senate Bill 1051, the one item that I know that could be construed as less than clear and objective is a setback in R 7.2, where it is an average of the lot width. It's twenty percent of the average lot width. Well, if the lot is not uniform, where you take those measurements impacts what that setback could be. I don't believe that that is creating a barrier to housing development, but it could be one of those items that are addressed in the code audit and the clarity of the code to be in compliance with 1051. So there has been a lot of work done in Oregon related to housing. There are housing choice guidebooks available. There are character-compatible, space-efficient housing options for single-dwelling neighborhoods. There are, there's been a lot of focus on this and House Bill 2001 is an opportunity for municipalities to review their code and allow for more middle housing. Requiring ADUs to have additional parking and owner occupancy was determined in House Bill 2001 not to be reasonable. And so Senate Bill 1051 required ADUs to be allowed, but local jurisdictions were allowed to have reasonable regulations pertaining to ADUs. House Bill 2001 said owner occupancy requirement and requiring additional parking for that accessory dwelling unit is not reasonable. Therefore, you cannot require owner occupancy or additional parking in excess of what that primary dwelling requires for accessory dwelling units unless they are used as vacation rentals.
So just to clarify, so if you had a building that had a certain number of parking requirements and you were to add a certain number of square feet to it that caused there to be an additional parking without an ADU, right? Calling it an ADU eliminates that parking requirement?
Currently, single-family residences have a set number of parking requirements. It's not based on square footage. And so adding four hundred square feet of ADU would not change the parking requirement for that single-family residence. However, currently, the accessory dwelling unit in the Gladstone Municipal Code, when you are trying to develop an accessory dwelling unit, you have to provide one additional parking space. House Bill 2001 says that's not reasonable. That provides a barrier to developing this needed middle housing through the use of accessory dwelling units. Therefore, it cannot be enforced. Yes.
So I believe I heard you say that there's a Senate bill that said the parking thing is up to the local municipalities. So which one of those bills overrides the other?
What, so what I said was, in the Senate bill, municipalities could determine reasonable regulations that would not cumulatively prohibit the development of housing. And House Bill 2001 has determined that the parking requirement is not reasonable unless it's used as a vacation rental.
And my understanding is that since we have some of these regulations in our code that discourage the construction of these or development of these, we can no longer really enforce them because they're not in compliance with state-level code. So even prior to changing our own code, if that's the direction we go, it would not serve us to try to continue to enforce those limitations because they could be overturned on appeal.
It could be challenged in court. Correct.
Well, we've got a state law that's in effect and just so I'm clear, why would we go there? I mean, this is, am I missing something? Because it seems real clear that the local control was being replaced by a mandate and you're going to follow that mandate. So if, why would we require it on an application? If someone came in, this law's in effect, even if they thought they had to, wouldn't we just like turn them down or let them know that you don't, you don't, you don't need to provide parking?
Well, exactly.
Can I get some clarification there? So if a developer is building a property with an ADU, right? So whether they plan on renting that ADU out or they plan on renting it on Airbnb changes whether or not there's a parking requirement.
Correct.
How are we supposed to know at Planning Commission who they're gonna rent it to?
That is going to be part of the amendments that you see next month during the public hearing.
And code enforcement of that. See, I put one in my backyard and, you know, and I use it as a vacation rental. I mean, eventually code enforcement would probably find out that that's what was going on and make sure I had a parking slot.
Basically, it's okay for a long-term rental, but not short-term rental without parking. That's what it is, right?
And did you say that it's, an ADU is only four hundred square feet maximum?
Max?
Depending on, doesn't matter the size of lot?
For clarification, you're talking about the maximum in our current code?
In the current code.
Okay. Does the, do the state requirements mandate a maximum? No, okay. So a size limitation could also be a factor that some would consider not reasonable as a, you know, and something that would tend to reduce the amount of construction of that type of housing.
So in relation to House Bill 2001, I wanted to provide some visuals of what middle housing could be. So on the screen in front of you, there are a couple of examples of duplexes that were provided in the housing choice guidebook that was partially funded from a grant through the Transportation Growth Management Program. And so a duplex could look on the surface as a single-family residence if it is modified inside to be a duplex. Or it could be, look like attached single-family residences as in the image to the right. And so there are a variety of options when you think about middle housing and developing duplexes within the city limits of Gladstone.
Question.
Yes.
If I have a house and it's two thousand square feet, can I, with the way the code is going, turn that into a duplex?
You would need to look at whether there are any Homeowners Association rules and regulations or regulations outside of the Gladstone Municipal Code. But with House Bill 2001, depending on how Gladstone crafts it, yes, you could. But again, the model code comes out in December and how that will be directly tied to Gladstone will be up to interpretation next year.
So being from the county who controls property in the county, I put an ADU on my, in my backyard and you want to buy it. Who holds title to the land? Do I, do we have to read, do we have to cut the property up to allow for an owner-occupied ADU? I know in Hawaii, there's a lot of leased land that people own homes on. How does that affect the actual dirt that the place is put on that was in my yard to begin with?
If you do not meet the lot size requirements of the Gladstone Municipal Code, you will not be able to subdivide that ADU out of the primary lot.
To make it, I guess, try again.
So you wouldn't be able to...
To make it owner-occupied, you would have to subdivide the dirt out of the lot?
No. You could have a deed restriction on the lot that requires that either the primary dwelling or the accessory dwelling be owner-occupied. And it could be a deed restriction tied to the lot. It wouldn't necessarily have to be a completely separate lot.
You could even put the ADU on an easement if you had to. I've seen it done elsewhere.
So the way that it is currently in Clackamas County, put on my other hat, there is a deed restriction required for accessory dwelling units. And it's in the Gladstone Municipal Code as well, that there be a deed restriction for either the primary or the accessory dwelling unit. And so prior to approving building plans where there's an accessory dwelling unit, we receive a copy of the recorded deed restriction identifying that either the primary or the accessory dwelling unit is owner-occupied. So that would still be allowed if you're doing it as a vacation rental per the regulations in 2001 or could potentially be allowed per 2001 for vacation rentals. But that would no longer be something that I would review if it's going to be owner-occupied or a long-term rental.
And it sounds a little funny to say the ADU being owner-occupied rather than the main one, but this is something that some people do to downsize. You build an ADU, you move into it, you rent out the main house to a tenant and you have a source of income and you've downsized into a smaller unit. So it could be, conceivably be either one that's occupied by the owner. Or both, I guess, except, yeah.
Currently, it could be either one.
So just to clarify.
Or both.
Why does the owner have to occupy either one?
Because that is what it says in the code currently.
But I'm just, I'm just wondering, like if you own a property...
In reality, there was a flood of rentals that we would, people, not to interrupt you, but the marketplace of let's turn our house into a rental was getting really crazy in a lot of communities. So I think that was a lot of what's behind this because you can't just have the complete Oklahoma land rush and I think that's what's behind it.
But I just mean like if you own a property, let's say it had an ADU, you know, we're saying that you could not move out and rent out the property because you have to live in one of the two properties.
Well, except under HB 2001, that's one of the things that is no longer reasonable.
Right.
The requirement that, of owner occupancy, which we currently have in our code is no longer an enforceable requirement.
Correct.
And then they get, they correct it with, if I'm hearing you clear, then it's the issue of the rentals and the Airbnbs that stops the Oklahoma land rush, so to speak. Okay.
I mean, that is the most likely use for them in the area, right? Because that's where you're gonna make some money.
Yeah, and I'm, you know, not here to argue it, but it's just a point where you lose the balance.
But isn't, according to the rules, that would mean that you would have to, if you don't live there, occupy it, you have to have the extra parking space?
If, if you are using it as a vacation rental. Correct. You could. Different local jurisdictions could require that as part of the amendments to address 2001.
And these units are sometimes referred to as granny flats or in-law flats. They can also be used by a family member who resides there, but whether or not rent is paid. But it's not just an effort to, you know, to generate income through establishing a rental unit. It could be something for, that would help a family or a family member with special housing needs right there on your own property.
Correct. One of the other things that is mentioned in House Bill 2001 is that townhouses have to be allowed in areas. We don't know what areas means, but I wanted to provide some examples of townhouses, which are attached units, each on a separate lot, but with an attached wall with its own entry from a public or a shared street. And they have a variety of appearances now. And so it, it could be the old-time row houses that you think of historically in the Northeast. It could be the homes that you see down in Portland where they share a wall and they're, they're all modern looking. They can come in all different forms and all different appearances. But based on 2000, House Bill 2001, they will have to be allowed in areas. And that, that is what the model code will help to determine in December of 2020, is what does areas mean?
I have a question, and this is probably down the road. I may be getting out over my skis here, but how about height restrictions? Is that going to change in the codes or is that to be determined?
That is to be determined. Right now, it's 35 feet.
Right.
So what could it be? And that might be where in 2021, you all are looking at the model code and considering what changes to make to Gladstone Municipal Code in relation to that.
Regarding the townhomes, so the main difference for us would be removal of the setbacks between them, right?
Do they have a minimum width on the lot line?
Not currently.
The structure has a minimum square footage.
I know, but it is a 20 or 25 foot.
Yeah, but, well, you see, some of these places look like they're about four feet wide and about 25 feet to tie.
Male slots.
They could, yeah. Cluster cottages is another one that has to be allowed in areas. Whether they are, are modern or the old historic type, cluster homes are small, single-level detached units, often on their own lots, clustered around shared open space. A neighboring town, Milwaukee, recently received a grant from Metro to look at their code in relation to cluster cottages. And they found with their current code that, that, based on the amount of open space required, based on setbacks, that right now you could probably build the front wall of a, a home and meet the requirements on most of their residentially-zoned properties for cluster cottages.
You mean just the front wall?
Yep.
That's all that you could build?
Yep, that's all you could build. With the parking requirements, the open space requirements and the setbacks, you would be able to build the front wall. And maybe the front porch. Because the front porch could potentially enter into the setbacks by five feet.
This is actually one where we'll want to pay some special attention because you can get the, the tiny homes, for example, for about $4,000. And if they put them, say, in a circle on a piece of property, it would not make sense for us to require a couple of parking for a $4,000 tiny home.
So currently, the Gladstone Municipal Code regulates planned unit developments, which are often shaped such that they have open space dedicated and have different setbacks. But the Gladstone Municipal Code currently requires that the setbacks be the same. So maybe it's not the setbacks that makes for the planned unit development. Maybe it's the, the lot size. But it's, it's, the planned unit development may not address the cluster cottages in House Bill 2001. And the, the House Bill 2001 will impact all of the zoning districts potentially.
Are they changing the impervious surfaces?
We'll see what the model code says.
Now, I, I see up there you have the Gladstone, the current Gladstone Code mentions a planned unit development, at least 80,000 square foot lot. That's a pretty big lot requirement.
It is.
I think the, the housing that went in on Glen Echo a couple of years ago was probably the last lot that size that would, would have potentially been, we would have been able to have something like this.
And the setbacks for the perimeter have to remain the same as the underlying zoning district. So that would maybe allow these homes to be a little bit closer, but not to adjacent neighbors.
So somebody would have to have quite a few adjacent lots in order to, to do one of these if we don't make major changes in the size of the homes.
Potentially.
Well, and this is something that no matter what the code says, is there's going to be a practicality at some point for Gladstone or for wherever you're trying to do something like this. I mean, you just look at, at the cost and-
Yeah.
And how can you put it together? And in some places, it's going to be prohibitive.
And the small historic lots that are 5,000 square feet, how, how would you put cluster homes on a lot that size? It may not make sense. And it may depend on the developer or it may depend on whether it's the tiny homes or, but it's something to think about. But luckily, you won't have to tackle that until next year.
It's also likely to be tackled as part of either senior or low-income housing, right?
Could be.
Some places like that don't have, just have a green area, but they may have a shared, like a community room for dining for preparation of meals or something like that for people who don't really want to do that so much, but they have it. There's a good book called Pocket Neighborhoods written by, I think, a local architect that is one of the classic on examples of those types of developments. And I would commend it to you if you want to get a handle on what these cottage clusters look like. Because I, I think other commissioners are correct. Gladstone probably isn't the most suitable location for them right now. But they're certainly a housing option that I'm glad other communities that are more appropriate are considering. Because it seems to me like it'd be a nice way to live.
And you will have to consider in areas.
Right.
That specific area.
Meldrum Bar Park.
There's our 80,000 square foot lot, yeah. Don't, don't, don't start talking about big jokes about development of parks.
So Glad, Milwaukee may have some items in addition to the model code from the state that Gladstone may want to look at because of the proximity and the smaller, skinnier lots. There might be some items in that grant for the project that are relevant.
We don't have anything smaller than R-5, but I think Milwaukee did make an adjustment to have 3,000 square foot lot minimums in some parts of their city. So, you know, we've not, we've not gone that direction here.
Well, they've got light rail transit there.
So there's work taking place in relation to these with the grant that Gladstone received with, for finalizing the code audit and finalizing the housing needs analysis. There's going to be work in 2021 that you all will see, once there is a model code. And there is going to be work next month to look at potential changes to the Gladstone Municipal Code in relation to the ADU parking and owner occupancy.
Now, as I understand it, this model code is coming out and we would sort of have to follow it by default if we don't take action of our own. But we could engage the community and, and develop a code of our own that might differ from it somewhat, that, that meets our own needs.
Correct.
The little book with the orange cover that you have there, back in May of 2019, the City Council and the Planning Commission had a joint meeting. Not everyone on either of those bodies was in attendance. But if you look up the agenda online for that meeting, you will find the text of that little book. It has good drawings and examples. I don't know if the other book was included in that too.
Both of these are available online-
Okay.
As PDF. If you Google the Housing Choice Guidebook or the character-compatible safe, uh, space-efficient housing options, both of them are PDF online, so.
What is, for my knowledge, what is the minimum lot size or minimum zoning in Gladstone?
7,200 feet for R-7.2. So 7,200 square feet. And I believe it's the same for R, uh, R-5. R-5 is 5,000. Okay, thank you. Which makes sense with the number.
Yeah.
Um, yes. So 5,000 square feet minimum for R-5.
And you can still occupy 35% of that is still the standard code, right?
Yeah. And 7.2, of course, actually works out to-
I'm just talking the, the footprint of the house.
With the setbacks.
Well, I'm just saying, I mean, I fought pervious and impervious surfaces and they would allow me 33%. Is that about what it is in Clackamas County now still or?
It's about that, yeah. You also have to work with the Oak Lodge and West to make sure that they, they are involved when, when you have impervious surface as well. Because they, they cover the surface water requirements for treatment.
Last year, the Planning Commission approved the development of a triplex, the first, I think, in quite a while, just down the street on Exeter, kitty corner from the elementary school. It was a 7,900, 7,900 square foot lot with a 1,000 square foot house on it. It's in the R-5 zone because that applies to the whole area, even though the zone itself, the house, the lot itself is much larger than 5,000 square feet. But because we had a 2,500 square foot requirement per unit, you could fit three units on a 7, 7,900 square foot lot. And that's, you know, we're going to have to take a look again at what our minimum lot requirement is going to be when we are required to change and allow duplexes again, which are currently prohibited in the five, in the R-5 zone. That's about the last 20 years, I think.
Initiative.
Yeah.
They're allowed in R-7.2 if it's on a collector or a arterial street.
So we're also going to have to expand the possible locations for them. That would be something else to come into compliance with that. So these are, these are major changes.
They are.
Let's bring up a good point, though. That was changed by initiative. Do we have to take any extra steps if that's going to be changed?
Um, if you do not adopt your own code, the model code goes into effect in July of 2022.
What I mean is if we're going to change something that was voted in by initiative, do we need to go through extra steps?
That would be a question for your attorney. I do not know.
Well, let's, let's get some clarification on what it was by initiative. You mean the, the voters voted to make that change? Or did the City Council amend the code?
That's my understanding.
I knew that there was a citizen petition to do it.
I, I've heard this from a couple of pretty reliable sources. And so I just, I'm bringing it up and I want to make sure we're clear because it seemed-
A couple of residents told us that they were part of it.
Yeah, and, and I think it was 1999.
Yeah.
So I, I-
Can we maybe follow up on that?
Anyway, it's, yeah, it's, it seems a little odd, but not unforeseen we're in Gladstone.
I mean, even if we're legally required to change it, I feel like if there was an initiative, there may be extra steps.
There might be.
Sure.
And I'm not, I'm not familiar with this or if there would be.
Okay, that's helpful to know.
We have a, currently have that ban and regardless of how we got there, that's overridden by the state law, right? Basically. Okay.
All right. Thank you very much. This, you know, certainly gives us a heads up on, on some important work that we'll have to do in the coming months. I'm glad that the state is doing some of the work for us by developing model codes. But, but I think it's important that we also, you know, involve the community of Gladstone in what direction we go and make sure that we have all the appropriate levels of hearings and public information involved.
Mr. Chairman, I'm, we are fortunate to have City Administrator Bets here. And I wonder if there's anything the city's doing that you might want to fill us in on where you're maybe out ahead of this a little bit that could be of help to us?
Certainly do.
Yeah, bet you do.
And I think it kind of is a prelude to your next item when you talk about your work plan. You know, Gladstone historically has never had an economic development department or a planning department. And we've contracted our services for planning. And Clackamas County does a great job for us. They don't have the capacity to take on special projects, this of which is one of them. And Gladstone is actually really trying to be ahead of the housing issues that we're dealing with. So we applied for a grant. The state did award us, we asked for 89,000. They awarded us 26,000. So the good news that I have to share with you is that Echo Northwest did the Clackamas County Housing Needs Analysis. And the consultant that did the work for that has agreed to finish the Gladstone Housing Needs Analysis piece. So we have a budget of money of $26,000 to do the Housing Needs Analysis and we have to develop a community engagement strategy. So Echo Northwest in the next six weeks is going to take our baseline Housing Needs Analysis and they are going to get it into a draft form by September 2020. So we will meet our deadline. And then they're going to also help us get it adoption-ready by our next deadline for that. The other piece of that is that we need to have a community engagement strategy. We've done a lot of work already on the Housing Code Audit and also the Downtown Revitalization Plan Code changes. What our desire is, is to take all three of those products at the end of the year and adopt them. To do that, we have to hire additional consultants to do that work because again, the planning staff can't do that. The LCD is going to have another round of grants at the end of, or mid-year of 2020 that we're going to apply for. So our goal is to actually take the Housing Needs Analysis information, the work done on the Housing Code Audit, the Downtown Revitalization Plan, do our community engagement, package it, and then implement the changes. So I think this next year in Planning Commission, that is a lot of what we need your help with. And part of the Housing Needs Analysis is going to require a technical advisory committee, which we already established a Housing Code Committee. And some of those people will participate, but the Planning Commission also has to be engaged with the Housing Needs Analysis. So I think as you talk about what do you want to do for 2020, I think really addressing affordable housing is going to be a, a main charge of the Planning Commission.
And Ms. Bets, you started out by mentioning economic development. And for some people, particularly in the downtown revitalization-defined area, housing, development of housing in that area could be a, a factor that determines economic development as well. So I'm glad that there's a little bit of an overlap there and you're kind of talking about both of them in the same breath because they do have a connection. Now, when you say we need to adopt them, I assume it's the City Council that will adopt them following some hearings, hearings conducted by the Planning Commission? That's what we did with the Downtown Revitalization document itself.
That is correct, yes.
So regarding the infrastructure deficiency process, I know that we have documents right now that show what the analysis was based on what we need to do to get all of our infrastructure up to par for the current housing that we have. And it showed where we were lacking based on the current housing. Has, is there any plan to update any of that based on the requirement that we increase that housing?
I think we have to do the Housing Needs Analysis first and then that piece would come after that. So that, it's all really a phased-in approach. But the beauty of this is this spring, we're moving into the new Civic Center. This building's coming down. The library visioning process is happening. The downtown revitalization is going to happen. All of this is coming together and I think it's fantastic opportunity for that to happen. But the infrastructure piece will come after the analysis work is done. And then the other good news is that Metro right now has included $5 million in their proposal. They don't know how they're going to package that yet for infrastructure for the Portland Avenue with the work we already did in the downtown revitalization. So it's all coming together really nicely. There's a lot of work to do in Gladstone, but I think you guys are going to be the impetus for helping move that forward this next year.
So the, the concern I had is when I read through that document, which admittedly was a very- So the, the concern I had is when I read through that document, which admittedly was a very beefy document.
Which one?
Um, the one that was talking about like our sewer lines and all that. I forget the name of the document.
Like the sewer master plan?
Yeah, the master plan.
Okay.
So it was talking about, you know, if we pay this much money, we can upgrade these lines to compensate for how much we currently need, the capacity we currently need. Um, and I'm wondering, you know, if, say, for the next year, that's basically what we're using to drive any upgrades we're doing, those are all gonna be under, uh, under spec for any changes that this is causing, right? And I'm just wondering, are we taking any of this into account with any upgrades like the gym is doing, for example?
I think that all complements each other. Um, because even like in the civic center, when we're doing our improvements there, we're trying to be efficient with services and upgrade infrastructure in, from the sewer account to address that. And so I, I think that we're trying to take a holistic approach. Um, but the infrastructure piece is just gonna come after the analysis piece with that.
And the sewer master plan was also written with an eye toward system development charges for future growth. So if the growth happens at a faster rate because we changed code and allow other, uh, missing middle forms of housing, uh, it may happen, but we do have a structure in place to, to get extra income, at least for the cost of doing those improvements associated with growth. Um, now, obviously, if we add, you know, tons of ADUs all over, that may be a different situation. But, um, uh, we're, we're an advantage compared to some communities for whom growth only means moving beyond the boundaries of where you are now and adding new infrastructure. Uh, we are trying to make the infrastructure that we have accommodate growth within the boundaries of the city, which is one of the strengths of being kind of a, a sort of walled-in community. Uh, you, you know, you, you get the most value out of the infrastructure you already have and not try to add acreage to your community and expand beyond and, and, uh, because any infrastructure you add, ultimately, you're taking on the responsibility for maintaining it forever. Uh, and that's a, always a losing prospect as cities all over this country know.
And we may find that there's not a, a real demand for the ADUs after we change our code. We don't know. Some cities have only experienced, you know, one or two. It, it really does depend on that. Um, but my other question, um, was, did you want some guidance on the home occupation?
Not at, not at my...
Not at this one. That's gonna be at the next meeting. Because that does have to do with how do we enforce the vacation rental issue. In our experience, we get complaint driven from neighbors that basically ratted them out to say they're using it as a vacation rental. So that's how we know about it. But we're trying to look for language to help us in our code so that the surrounding neighbors will have a say in whether or not that is gonna become a vacation rental. So that will take place at the next meeting. Okay, perfect.
Well, one other thing. Uh, you talked about the community engagement process. Um, decades ago in this city, soon after we adopted our comprehensive plan, the Planning Commission was designated as the Community Involvement Committee for the city. Um, we had to write a letter to the state and say, the reason we're doing that, which is not their preferred option, is because we are pretty much a grown-up city. Now, that was forty years ago. We're, uh, we're still, we haven't expanded too much size-wise since then. Uh, but we had some meetings, uh, just over a year ago talking about the fact that we have never had neighborhood associations in Gladstone to, uh, help, uh, local neighborhoods sort of, uh, have a role in the planning of projects that might impact theirs. We have a language in our code that talks about, um, what's the term it uses? Preserving neighborhood character, which is a very subjective term, I think. And I think that if we somehow had, um, a neighbor, uh, a, a community involvement program that made use of neighborhood associations and encouraged their formation and operation, uh, maybe that would help us, uh, as we move forward on trying to implement some of these changes. Because some neighborhoods may feel that ADUs or duplexes or triplexes are just not appropriate there, yet we are legally required to allow them to be everywhere. And, uh, and, and maybe the direction we go will, it will be more localized, uh, rather than trying to do on a community-wide basis.
Yep, I agree.
We've, we've had an interesting history in Oregon with neighborhood associations, good and bad. Sometimes when growth is coming and tremendous change is coming, we find ourselves pitted against each other. That's been the pattern, so I would caution some of what you just heard. Uh, I'm not opposed to neighborhood associations. Uh, I'm not opposed to CPOs. And I'm big on involvement. But we need to proceed very carefully because as change comes and as the chair has indicated, folks wanna know or get involved, you suddenly find all kinds of folks involved that creates confusion. It creates a lot of, a lot of disruption. So before we get on that path, we just need to be careful. I'm not opposed to it, but it's not a panacea. How many people live in Gladstone, by the way?
About twelve thousand.
Twelve thousand, right? And, and it may expand a little and obviously it's gonna go up. This is all about density. So even with growth, is Gladstone ever gonna have more than twenty thousand people in it? I'm, I'm not trying to put you on the spot. I'm just trying to get a picture of if my thinking is clear about where are we gonna put all these people? And, and how, how will this really affect us? You know, it's, it's, it's a good conversation, but I'm also, in my way, just stopping to pause here for a moment.
If I may, this, he was just saying, one thing is, is not in my yard. Not in my backyard. I'm gonna go back to the sewers, though. Being that we have no lots in Gladstone, you don't have any real SDC fees. Because if you're doing your ADUs, you're gonna be tying into the existing home sewer, generally speaking. So where, and you had brought up, and I've never, this is all news to me, but if we're, if the sewers are being built and the infrastructure's being built for today, how much, and that's why a question that I ask, what do they think that it will bring in in the ADUs for the growth in population here? Because that's gotta be looked at. But Gladstone isn't gonna, I don't see where it's gonna grow really anymore to handle the infrastructure, which is really, if you're gonna put the money in it, you gotta put the money in it.
The ADUs are... Yeah, the ADUs are not gonna be where the mass population changes happen. It's usually when smaller buildings are taken down and multi-families are put in. That's usually where we see the increase in population.
And every time you, if you, if you took, took a lot and added a home or added another hookup, then there's an S...
There's an SDC fee, right?
Right.
Correct. A lot of cities are waiving that system development charge for ADUs.
Correct.
Um, and I can tell you that, yes, from a Public Works Director's standpoint, that is a concern is that the legislators weren't thinking about what about cities and their existing infrastructure? What is that going to do when we are changing the infill requirements? And so it, it is a valid concern because we have antiquated infrastructure here. And so we do have to be very careful about that.
And it costs us, what, a million dollars to do two blocks worth of infrastructure on, uh, East Clarendon Street?
Clarendon Street.
And so, you know, that, that works out on, on that section of the street to about thirty-seven thousand dollars per lot that those pipes and sidewalks, you know, and streets went through.
Yeah.
We wouldn't necessarily need to do that extensive an upgrade. Uh, we were able to put this triplex in here by running one new line to the house and adding three meters and connecting it. But, uh, there will be some types of development which will require more than that. And it's good that Metro is providing some assistance in that regard because, uh, that will be, uh, you know, the, the correction to this perhaps oversight on the part of the state for trying to get housing.
Yeah.
You gotta look at the big picture and sometimes you focus on one and don't see the other thing that, yeah.
The effects of that.
All right. Thank you, Ms. Bets.
Thank you, Ms. Bets.
Well, I don't think we have to take any action tonight. Uh, um, as far as the annual work plan, um, you have, oh, you have a work plan for 2019. I don't know that I have a copy of that, uh, myself. Oh, is it in the...
It's in the back.
Okay. Oh, it's behind that brown page. There it is. Okay. So, um, some of the other committees sort of review, uh, give themselves a grade on how well they did on the, the plan that they adopted for the year. Uh, I was not on the commission in 2019 and attended very few meetings, watched a few on video. Uh, but let's take a look at the, the items that were on our work plan. Uh, reviewing the code regarding land use approval. Uh, have we, have we completed that?
Yeah, that's been changed.
Okay, so that's a, we give that on a scale of one to five, we give that a five because it's really done. We're beyond just in progress. We've completed it. Uh, I noted, uh, reviewing some minutes of the city council for developments that were going in, uh, forty-five years ago, I think. That was an issue back then, particularly for large developments. Uh, and, uh, and even now with the very smallest things you do, it's hard to get something done in a year. So I'm glad you've, you've had some flexibility on, on how to, uh, how to deal with that. Uh, implementing elements of the Gladstone Revitalization Plan. Uh, we're somewhere in the midst of that. We've, uh, did we, did you conduct a tour of the metro area to view other communities? Has that been done?
I do it all the time. I'm just out there.
We don't do it collectively, but we, it certainly, it happens individually.
But, yeah, it's, it's certainly...
So this is something, if we were gonna grade it, I would say we're only at the level of maybe a two. Uh, we, we did begin some of the, uh, the, the code change recommendations were dealt with back in the code change, uh, audit program that we did back in February. So there was some discussion of that. We've made a little bit of progress on it so far. But it, this appears to be something that we should carry over to 2020. Is, uh, is, do you, do you agree?
And it's certainly integrated with the earlier discussion.
Right, right.
Yeah, I mean, so it's, if we didn't wanna do it, we'd still have to.
We'd still have to.
No, but, yeah, it's, it's certainly something that, along with the affordable housing aspect, is intertwined.
So both of those are still part of it. Land use training for planning commissioners. There are some good things online and good books that you can use if you're new to this, uh, that are helpful. But we have done, uh, we did land use training for commissioners in the fall of 2017. Uh, did you do any additional training this past year?
We did.
They had training in the, yeah.
Yeah, this, wasn't it to Salem?
Down for a day.
Okay.
Actually, it was at the Gladstone Senior Center.
Correct, yeah.
Good. All right, so that's also a five, except for Darren and I who are new to this. But I've been through one training before.
I'm a builder, so I've been through enough training. I mean, not enough.
Are there other i- other items that you think you'd like to add, uh, for the 2020 beyond, uh, what we've talked about? I mean, we have a lot on our plate as it is. Uh...
I have a suggestion, a very strong recommendation that intertwined with development is transportation. And I don't see the word transportation on this page anywhere. Um, in, in terms of really, not that we're gonna change all our transportation plan, but we have a lot of transportation issues and the whole parking at things, the, I'm saying where we've got, we've got a need to include transportation in our thoughts and in our, and, and when we look at what we're dealing with, there's gonna be more and more, we as a commission and as a city and as residents are seeing more and more, uh, backups, more and more lines of cars, uh, more concerns about tolling and things. And while we're, I'm not here to be specific, I believe that a, that, that education, information and, uh, a focus on transportation is critical or the rest of your planning never really will work. And we're in a very constrained environment here with, we don't have a trolley bridge. I, I wish we had more bridges, but we've got the Clackamas River, the Willamette River, I-205. And that is a recipe for, for transportation issues as we infill and make the changes that are, that are, that are obviously coming. So I'm not making such so much as a motion as much as, uh, entertaining some support for putting it on here as a consideration.
Now, I, I think it's a very important aspect of some of the other things that, that we're talking about, doing the affordable housing. Some communities tie certain kinds of affordable housing to, to their proximity to mass transit, for example. And we don't have, we have, you know, bus routes here. And some of you were even discussing that a little bit before about how good they are or not good they are. But, um, uh, I would hope that that would be, uh, one aspect of our discussion of how to, uh, make the code adjustments and the, and the potential locations for these different types of housing. Uh, certainly, housing that does not require parking, additional parking, uh, would best be located, uh, down at this level of Gladstone rather than up on the hill where there's no, no bus transportation. Uh, no one wants to walk up and down a hill to get to the closest bus, whereas if you can get three routes just right outside your door, that's a whole different situation. So, uh, I'm, I'm glad we added that one. Other recommendations?
So one thing I might be interested in us looking at, there's a lot of the code, um, where we rely on outdated codes, uh, specifically like outdated energy codes, for example, where, you know, our solution to good solar is face south. That's, that's not an up-to-date recommendation, right? Um, it would be kinda nice for us to start looking forward a little bit and maybe start encouraging, um, uh, code that would be more forward-looking, you know, in terms of better energy use or, um, you know, being more self-sufficient. So we're not so dependent on the grid, for example, things like that.
And are you referring specifically to things in section seventeen that relate to housing? Uh, or are these codes other places?
Well, yeah, like our land use code relies on like the Oregon, uh, Oregon design standards or whatever that say, you know, buildings must face south, right? And that way they get the most sunlight coming through the windows. That way your house gets warmed up as much as possible. Well, that is actually not the most energy-efficient option for houses if it's getting hotter, right? So maybe it's a little too, um, too much for us, but it would be nice if we were able to start planning for housing options that were more forward-looking to something that would be realistically more beneficial in the next five, ten years than things that were beneficial thirty years ago.
Mr. Chairman? Yeah. I believe last year, at the, kind of at the direction of the city council, we got involved in, uh, membrane buildings, uh, as they relate to our municipal codes. And while I'm not suggesting that we spearhead that, I think we should offer our, uh, services to the city council if needed, uh, to look at, uh, municipal code revisions.
That's what I was gonna suggest, but it's a conversation we should have, but not without direction first.
If directed, I don't think it's, uh, I wouldn't suggest that it's our job to invent that. But I think if the city council has asked us to do it, we should be involved in doing it. I think the council took action on that one in, in particular and grandfathered some of the existing ones in. That was kind of the compromise to get, uh, you know, to get it passed. Uh, but if there are other similar ones, uh... Suppose come up, I, I think we, uh, we could be an asset to the city council. Okay.
I don't know if it would fall under the affordable housing or not, but should we look into whether there are options we can do to help with the homeless aspect?
Yeah, I don't know if affordable housing itself is not, you know, that's one aspect. If you provide an increasing supply of homes, then people who don't have homes, uh, can't afford them, could afford them. But you're talking about people who are more transient homeless in our community.
Yeah, like is there things that we can do to make that situation better?
I know I'm reading about churches, not in this commu- well, we did have one church in this community who wanted to provide some services, uh, to homeless people. Uh, there are churches just outside that are adopting, um, plans where, uh, old people can sleep in their cars in the parking lot overnight and have a safe space. So, uh, different, different options of how, of how communities are dealing with it are out there and they often create a lot of community concern. Uh, we, we've got a lot on our plate here. Um, I don't know that there's a, another, um, another unit within the city government...
It may not be germane to what our charge is or to, to the rest. I, I don't know. I think we're starting to get into human services department right now in a way.
And we don't really...
Not dismissing it, but...
I understand that.
We don't have a human services... We don't have a human services advisory committee, but you're right, yeah.
Well, I'm reflecting on what the county's doing right now, and, because they're in a similar position, but yet they actually have it.
Do we have land use laws that make it hard to, um, to help that situation, right?
State law allows you to have up to three cars on your property for overnight camping.
Well, I wasn't even thinking about cars specifically, I was just thinking like, do we have laws because of things like our setbacks or number of people that can live in an, whatever, do we have land use laws that make it difficult for even some of our local, uh, groups to make that situation better?
Or is it the code that you're, would be more concerned about versus land use laws?
Yeah, I don't know.
Yeah, when, uh, when the church on Glen Echo came to the city council with a, a request for some, they described it as, as an emergency because they wanted to be able to open it quickly in the, in the winter, um, it, uh, it was not the best situation. Uh, we would have preferred to have had a little more advanced notice and, and deal with it. And, um, I, I, my memory of it was that there may have been some code-related things or, um, uh, something that, that they were kind of requesting some, uh, relief from in order to do that, uh, do you remember?
Well, they, uh, there is a process in play, it's the conditional use permit process. That's what wasn't followed, and that's what provides the, um, community input piece for that. So I'm not sure that your, your code is an impediment to allow that, I just don't think that we followed that process for it to happen. And then the church chose not to go through the conditional use process.
In, in that particular case, it was the fact that they came and expected a decision right away, or a decision, even an administrative decision rather than a council or commission decision, that, um, and didn't involve the public, apparently, to the degree that the public would have liked.
Right.
Okay, so, but we do have, we do have, uh, some provision for groups who want to provide those kinds of services to be able to, to do it with a conditional use conditioned by this body, I guess. Okay, all right, all right, well, that's, that's helpful to note. Well, this looks like we have plenty to do. Uh, I believe there are three different advisory committees that are planning to have joint meetings with the city council in March, is that correct?
In March. I think tonight we were just trying to get some ideas out there, I don't think we have to finalize anything, so, you know, additional input, I'm just trying to capture what you guys were talking about, but additional information on there and then make a actual, go to the city council with the final, uh, work plan.
Okay.
For their, for their review.
So we won't have the full city council meeting agenda that night, it will have a portion of, of a meeting where they are looking at work plans of other boards as well.
Correct, yes.
Okay, all right, so let's not plan to make this too complicated, but we want to get a buy-in and, uh.
Right, yes, and, you know, so if you want to discuss, if you want to go into a little more detail at the next meeting to discuss and then make your recommendation, or not recommendation, is, but as to what you would like to see done in 2020, your work plan.
Okay, you've given us some, some, a good summary of the categories, we had a little more specifics on the one that developed last year, I think we could work, look at that next month then and make that part of our agenda. Sure. To put a little more, uh, meat on the bones of these basic ideas. Commissioner Smith, you had another comment?
No, no, I did not.
All right, well, that's, that's been a good process, I appreciate you all, um, giving your input, thinking creatively in new areas that maybe we hadn't thought about before. Um, I, I think we have some responsibility for, uh, not only the housing issue, but also, um, you know, the climate change, uh, we know a whole lot more about it now than we did, uh, 40 years ago when the comprehensive plan was developed, and even though that plan speaks in general terms about operating more energy efficiently, I think the technology and our, our awareness of it are something that, uh, we could spend more time on, so. Um, well, let's do, uh, again, any more business for the public, apparently not. Uh, Councilor Mercer, do you have anything you want to bring from the city council?
At this point, I think you guys are going to be now, uh, a huge sash, and, uh, have confidence that it will, it will happen.
Most of what we do has to go through you eventually, so, uh, you will have a huge sash too, but we'll try to, uh, smooth the road along the way. All right.
I just agree.
Uh, business from the planning commission, uh, we'll start, uh, with Commissioner Langston?
I don't have any business.
All right. Um, not really, I think we covered most of what I wanted to say.
We're good, welcome aboard to, to.
Thank you.
To you guys, yeah.
I, I did think maybe it would be appropriate for, uh, for Darren and myself just to say a little bit about who we are and what we do. Uh, there are state laws, and it's written into our local code, that we can only have so many people on the planning commission who are engaged in the business of building and developing and things like that, and I believe you two are the two now that we have. Uh, so if you want to, uh, Darren, if you will share a little bit about yourself and what you do and, uh, your interests?
I am a contractor, mainly buy, fix, and sell homes, been buying, fixing, and selling since, I think the first one, 1992. Built some subdivisions, um, built new for a while, um, still buy, fix, and still, um, got like 22 rentals, so 22 tenants, so understand that market a little bit.
Yeah.
Um, been around, dealt with Clackamas County today, so, a little bit, know a little, a little about a lot, but not a little lot about anything.
Well, I think it's always helpful, as I've watched videos of meetings, I know it's helpful to get the, the comments from the people who are out there really doing it and know what it means to get a building permit or to, you know, to, uh, uh, follow the code and, and request a variance and everything else. So I'm glad that you two are a part of our board, uh, our commission, and we have that. Um, most of you know me, I was on the city council for a while, I'm a full-time grandparent and, uh, last year, uh, due mostly primarily to the will of the voters, I was not on the council, but kind of followed what you did and what they did and, uh, watched my youngest grandson grow up a little bit more, and this year I think I will have more time and look forward to, uh, being a part of this group and enjoying you and the good work that you have done. Uh, it can be a challenge in a city this size to deal with, uh, a public that either doesn't come to meetings at all or comes only when they are angry with you, uh, and I think you have, my, my observation has been that as a commission, you have handled those, both those situations very well, and I hope that will continue.
I, I do have one dilemma, though, um, my neighbor.
Lucky you.
We are supposed to be sort of geographically spread out, and Commissioner Langston and I live about five houses away from each other.
Oh, that's all right.
If I looked a little bit this way, I could see his house from mine.
Yeah.
Uh, but, uh, but I know it's good that we have people in all different sizes of homes, uh, I don't know what your ownership status is, but, uh, I think, I think we are still pretty representative of the community, and, uh, and I look forward to working with all of you this year. All right, is there any more business before we adjourn?
A reminder, volunteer committee orientation on January 28th.
Okay, that's, uh.
Next Tuesday.
This coming Tuesday, that's right.
Correct.
Okay, all right, we'll see you. Some of you have been through that.
I got the notice, but what was the time again, if you would?
At six o'clock.
Thank you.
And you'll be getting a follow-up email as well, just as a reminder.
Okay.
And you guys got a copy of an upcoming event from DLCB on January 30th, um, to discuss House Bill 2001 and House Bill 2003.
And that's, uh, on the, uh, Clackamas Community College Harmony Campus over near, um, near Clackamas Town Center, that, uh, okay.
We'll be getting the notice to, make, file our, um.
FEI?
Yeah, yeah.
You should be getting that soon, it's April 15th is the deadline, but you should be receiving information soon about that, yes.
Oh, that's right, that's something that has.
And as soon as I hear any information, I'll certainly pass that along as well.
All right, uh, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn?
Mr. Chairman, I move if we adjourn.
All right, you've been moved.
I'll second that.
All right, motion by Counselor Smith, seconded by Counselor Poole, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
At, uh, 8:10 PM, we are adjourned.